It's America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank everyone who their tenants and the names can reflect the role of all the various trustees and staff. Item three, let's move on, entertain more for the two of the three twenty two four and the file two fifteen park and rec two twenty two plan mission three six five minutes after the landing.
I will move to a second.
Motion in second as well as comments, questions, clarification, one of the minutes.
Um, I I had one, I believe. Let's see. Page one, um, on the village board from our plan, when we talked about the resolution for the pre annexation agreements. I didn't see anything in there, um, with my question about the examination of the sewer and water main and about how many hours that might take Amber if she had to do that. And that the fact that she, if she was not able to do that, that that cost would need to be turned over to the developer. So that's not anywhere in the minutes is. Can that be added and just worry then? I would be for that to put that at some point.
We staff can review, um, the recording. We record all village board meetings and they are uploaded to our village YouTube channel. Um, staff can review the recording, um, and look to see what, uh, clarification point, exactly what you're asking for could be made. Um, that I could offer, um, otherwise I'm.
I mean, I've got, I will be legal. Legal copy of our minutes. Any others? Okay, we have motion in a second, um, comments. Very none, all in favor?
Alright.
That motion passes. Item four, uh, looking to discuss and be heard before we get started, I'd just congratulate the new newly elected board of and congratulate all the existing outgoing members, so, uh, new faces, new times. I hope, uh, you know, the vision of the community moves forward. And I wish the best of luck to all of them. Anybody else in the audience wishing to be heard on that agenda item?
Mister President, I do. I have a statement from the Ozaki County Historical Society to read. Procession and ceremony planned for World War Two pilot Lieutenant Royce Harms. Royce Harms, age twenty-six of Grafton, was killed on Sunday, August first, nineteen forty-three, in the attack in the Romanian World War Two Titan Harms. It was a pilot, a B twenty-four bomber, along with his eight crew. He was killed and the aircraft was shot down near Italy. He received the Purple Heart as well as other medals, medals. Born on August twenty-fourth, nineteen sixty, he graduated from Grafton High School. In nineteen thirty-four, he was Grafton's first Eagle Scout. In his honor, he shared the name of the Rose Harms American Legion Post three five five with World War Soldier, World War One Soldier, Corporal Fred Rose. After almost eighty years, the recently identified remains of Lieutenant Harms will return to Grafton for burial on Saturday, May sixth, at Woodlawn Cemetery on Third Avenue in Grafton. He will be placed alongside his parents at noon with a ceremony from, with full military honors from Military of the Pentagon. The public is invited to stand in silence along North Street between twelfth and Third Avenue at eleven fifteen to pay the respects for this local hero and follow the procession to the cemetery. All residents and businesses in Grafton are encouraged to display their flag on this day. Military organizations and service organizations in uniform are asked to line the driveway into the cemetery. Special accommodations will be made for World War Two veterans at this ceremony. These veterans should be, should make their intention known to the Ozaki County Historical Society.
I do, uh, encourage everyone to test page to the level that they can. Anybody else in the audience, machine burner?
Yes, Pam.
Oh.
We are honored, I mean, not for the Grafton area Chamber of Commerce, I am honored to be able to present, um, outstanding public service awards to our three outgoing trustees who have made huge impacts in our community for a very long time. Tom, this is for you. Um, we appreciate, uh, as a, as an organization, we appreciate all that you have done. It matters. It has mattered for a long time. And you will be missed. Um, and as such, the chamber really wants to acknowledge all of your hard work, all that you have done for us and our community. And hope you will join us at our annual meeting on May seventeenth to celebrate all that you do and all that you are and all that you will be in your new lives, um, outside of the village. Let's work real quick or is that okay? I mean, I don't want to interrupt you. Yeah. So can we go over there so we can get Tom in town?
Sure.
Bring your balloons. Bring your balloons. They definitely have like twelve, twelve years. Yeah, once in twelve and fourteen, right? Only twelve and eight. Okay. I have to ask my numbers. How do we get Tom in two? No, it's all good. No, I'll have the money.
Alright, uh, back to the, move on to item five, to read. Uh, this is presented in a normal fashion to move on to item six, resolution for this action items. We have nine. A for the Park and Rec Committee, and that is the award project for the twenty oh three River Bend Park Project to Peterson Construction Company for a contract cost match exceed one point three nine six million and ten dollars to my life because it's a play on a flat pad equipment for a cost match exceed three hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars to approve. Please help me get into that. Um, let's talk a little bit about the funding sources for that. Um, just, you want to hear?
Uh, yes, it'll be a bit of a combination effort, um, as I, I will ask for a bit of assistance from, uh, Director Wolf, but, um, and Director Wolf, thank you. Okay, um. That said, currently and as presented to the Park and Recreation Committee, um, the Park and Recreational Facilities Fund, which is funded through impact fees, currently has a balance of one point five, uh, over one point five million dollars available right now today. That said, staff's trend analysis of incoming revenues based upon, uh, single family homes coming forward, um, over the past years and into this year so far through the first quarter, we have, um, every reason to believe that this fund with that incoming revenue will be able to support, um, not only the construction project, um, as presented um, of the one point three nine six million, but also the villages, um, purchase of the associated equipment to avoid contractor markups in the amount of the three thirty-four, eight forty-three. Um, that said, um, the use of, uh, trend analysis is not unheard of with regards to looking at, um, making purchases. Um, the, the costs that are outlined for this project will not be due tomorrow. Um, in fact, they will come do piecemeal throughout the remainder of this year and potentially into next year. Um, so over that time, we will see impact fees continuing to come into, um, this particular fund. Um, with that, if I, I could put Director Wolf on the spot, she wrote me a fantastic summary note, which I'm sorry, Jeff, I can't decipher it.
Right. Thank you. Um, Jesse or Administrator Tyson asked me to, um, do some math quickly on our park impact fees. So the, uh, board may, may know that the current per unit park impact fee is four thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. Staff has anticipated, um, or projected that we will see about sixty new single family homes this year. We have approved fifteen so far, um, so estimating out, um, an additional forty-five new houses would be an estimated one hundred and ninety-two thousand and a hundred and twenty-five dollars um, in additional park impact fees for the remainder of the year. Just for reference, we, um, approved sixty-eight new single family homes next year. So again, sixty would be a, a conservative estimate.
Certainly have a twenty twenty-one, was it close to?
Twenty twenty-one was, um, was ninety-nine houses, and I think that was an anomaly. Um, we don't anticipate reaching that again due to a lot of factors.
So, uh, explanation of funding sources to the board is where?
So I understand we're ninety-nine point nine percent sure, but what's the backup plan for the cost?
Excellent question. Backup plan, we would look to advance dollars to the park fund either through the, uh, de-federalized revolving loan fund account. Those were dollars that were specifically provided to the Village of Grafton through a federal program, which several years ago, the federal program dropped. And we passed a resolution to utilize those funds as we see fit. We kept a balance of those funds in the revolving loan fund program. So we could reallocate those, advance that to the park fund to cover any cost difference. And then as dollar, as new revenues come in, pretty much pay back the revolving loan fund. Um, another option would be the portion of room tax dollars that we keep here. Uh, thirty percent stays here, seventy percent goes out to the tourism entity. So there are actually two, um, possibilities there for being able to advance dollars should the, um, park and recreational facilities fund, um, come up short. Mm-hmm, sure.
So obviously the goal is to, um, is to be flush and equal one point four million dollars and if all the impact fees that we'll get. Um, and as I understand from the email, so thank you, Paul, just more earlier. Um, boost them across crossing, um, we can, you know, those funds are going to be contributed here too.
Shady Hollow as well, yeah.
Yes, yes. So, um, at some point, can we see some kind of updates along?
Oh, absolutely. We'd be more than happy to provide that. Yep, absolutely.
Other questions? Okay, I'll entertain that motion. I'll make the motion.
I'll send.
Motion, second final comments, question? Very none, all in favor?
Alright.
That motion passes. Move on to report the finance. We have two items.
Yep.
And one is the most important, the ordinance amendments after twelve sixteen, I think for property record, with the changing of maximum people going to five thousand and then adding the maximum people projects to ten thousand.
Correct. These were amendments made, um, during the deliberation at the, uh, Finance Committee meeting. Um, again, the overall goal here is to address the concern at a staff level with, um, looking to make fees that are charged commensurate with the activity or service being provided. Um, so that said, uh, there's a lot of discussion and this is the, um, recommendation coming forward from the, um, Finance Committee.
Okay, uh, most of the, yeah, we would add that last meeting, but now it's time to ask any final question?
So with the, uh, Jim, with the addition, and Jesse, with the addition of the five thousand, uh, uh, building and a ten thousand dollar per project, the, how does that really change, um, anything that we're doing with this, uh, with this proposal?
How will be a better question for Jessica? I mean, I'll probably cap the the seasons for sure.
Yes, so it, it will reduce the amount to a more reasonable, relatable amount to equal the actual effort, lots be somewhat similar to the actual effort for larger projects. Um, so for example, the season was approximately twenty-four thousand dollars for their property record and maintenance fee, and again, they would cap at the ten.
Okay, thank you.
So going forward, this will help the other developers that have voiced some concerns about why now, why now we're changing this because they have paid the past fees.
Right. It'll be applicable, anything moving forward, correct?
Yeah, going forward.
Yep.
Um, again, I, I'm thinking about them right now and what they've done in the past, um, and it, yeah, it's too bad this couldn't have been a lot sooner.
Well, we'll thank Jessica for being on top of, we're not, so, um, that being said, uh, entertain a motion to approve. Alright, your motion. Okay, I'll second it. If you get it on the floor, motion in a second. This is again, the item that, uh, a little bit of compromise, I came on a finance to go to board, uh, a welcome to vote. Motion in a second, all in favor? I, and opposed?
Opposed.
Show hands, all four. One, two, three, four, and five, and two, yes, that motion passes. Let's move on to item two, entertain a motion for, actually, I, yeah, well, I entertain a motion to approve the creation of a new job description Assistant Village Administrative Community Development Director. This came out of finance with no recommendation. Uh, but again, everybody was at that committee, so we'll just do a brief recap and then we'll put it on for all.
Uh, simply, uh, looking to establish a formal, uh, way to provide redundancy um, to my office, um, as well as assistance with special project help and, um, assistance with special, um, projects and events. Um, so with that, uh, the ninety-nine percent are actually the entire Community Development Director, um, job position remains intact with some very broad additional support role duties for myself in administration. Um, so that said, there is no financial change, whether it be a pay grade classification, there is no financial change with regards to salary. Um, there is no supervisory change with this position in that, um, Director Wolf would remain, um, oversight of the Community Development Department, um, would not translate to the, um, village staff as a whole. Um, and simply, again, provide that level of redundancy and assistance, um, in special cases, uh, for my office.
Okay, again, we had, uh, quite a lot of discussion. I don't really need to, I think everybody is pretty much up to speed on what the question is, so I will just open it up for discussion.
Okay, so I just want to double check. I mean, you had indicated your schedule allows time to put forward to this other position. Absolutely not going to feel strapped.
Yeah. Again, as Jesse mentioned, this is a more of a project specific assistance that I can be able to fill in the, the valleys of my workload.
What percentage would you guess that you're going to dedicate to this assistant job?
Administrator Tyson, would you think ten percent or five?
It, it tops a ten percent. If there's a real heavy lift on a project, but quite frankly, I would also, it is my responsibility to be cognizant of her roles and responsibilities as, um, the Community Development Director. Um, so really it is that basis of, um, being able to be a point of contact or a presence for the administrator's office in my absence and a short-term absence. Um, I think a, a good example frankly would have been earlier this week when my plans for, for no, out of no control of my own were really, um, um, discombobulated to say the least. Um, having that one point of contact then would have been great, um, not only for myself incoming to staff, but also anyone from the outside, whether it be trustees or, um, residents having that point of contact from an administrative standpoint, and then just being able to be that point of contact in my stead. Um, it, uh, special project, again, if it's a heavy lift, like, uh, for instance, when we transferred dispatch, that I would have looked to rely on assistance position to help gather that data from other communities and examples from other communities. That was a pretty heavy lift. Um, so there, it would take up more time. However, on something like, um, oh, uh, perfect, great example. The impact fee review project, that would be a lesser, where I obviously would still be assisting with it, but it would be a smaller project and thus not take up time away from the community development side of things. So it would be a balancing act. Frankly, it is something we, uh, would be learning as we go. I will be very upfront about that, which is another reason why those administrative support duties in the job description are broad. Um, because again, it is meant to as a simple form of redundancy and support for my office. So we'd balance it.
Okay, um, again, there was, uh, comparables made to the department, the police department, and things like that that have, you know, like a, I wouldn't call it maybe a second command. Um, we did talk a little bit about, um, again, to Jesse's point, having that go-to person, um, so there's no question. Um, I think that, um, you know, there's clearly no financial impact to this. So, um, it, um, it is on, um, obviously as an organization, we do want to continually develop and offer a career path for any and all of our staff, but, um, this is, uh, this is a new thing, so it needs to be decided on by the way. Yes.
Uh, Jesse, what sort of special projects, projects are you envisioning?
Um, you know, for example, the elected officials handbook, the, the transferring of dispatch, the personnel manual update, um, someone to be able to sit in on a meeting if I am absent for whatever reason and be able to debrief me when I get back if there's a development proposal similar to what we do now, or if, uh, there's a collective bargaining meeting, um, where really the labor attorney drives those discussions. However, I am there to make sure I understand what those discussions and what those, uh, impacts of those discussions may be on our financials. Um, you know, being able to act in my stead in that fashion, um, clearly would be a, a big help. And it also ties into that career interest of, uh, Director Wolf in looking to expand her career, potentially expand her career path in the future. So that is how I would look at utilizing this position. Specific projects right now, I don't know. Um, I know one of my twenty twenty-three, uh, goals is a tactical plan um, for the village. Um, I believe I would leverage, uh, Director Wolf, uh, with that project to assist with, you know, some researching and helping me formulate, um, talking points and how to, um, create the framework for that tactical plan, um, as she's a planner by trade. Um, you know, that'd be one quick example for this year, but again, uh, until special projects come up, I, it's very difficult to answer that question. I can give past examples and something I'm looking at in the very near future, but looking out, I, I'm not certain.
And right now, in your absence, wouldn't Paul be the go-to person as far the, the lead person at the village hall?
In your absence. There is no designation for a lead person in my absence. The village board in between the outgoing previous administrator and me coming into this role, the village board, um, designated Paul to act in that stead. And that ended when I came in my office. Um, that was a board action that, that established, uh, Paul in that role. As of right now, there is currently no formal individual to act in my stead in any short-term instance.
Okay, um, Lisa, go ahead.
Um, so in respect to having somebody, um, kind of next thing to man, you know, when you're gone, um, I don't know that we've had any problems, um, in the last eight years with that. And I think, um, the Director of Administrative Services, when, um, when Paul was named the Director of Administrative Services, I thought that one of his, um, new responsibilities was to be in charge of, of a lot of the people at the village hall. Um, maybe finance and the clerk.
Mm-hmm.
And in the past, I feel like it has been Paul. I mean, Paul sent an email today about, um, the meeting. So I guess I would say that we haven't had any problems in the past, and we have department heads for a reason because they are on their own and they manage their own department. So it's not like this had, these things haven't happened in the past. So, so for me, that's, that's not really, really an issue.
Okay.
Um, I guess the other thing is that it, it's very gray to me. It, it's very gray. There, there's, it's not specific. Um, I know that you are saying you would like some assistance, but I think some of the things that you know you're going to have to do in the future, um, I guess I, I would question that. Um, if, if, if your goals are your goals, you know, that's up to you. Um, I don't feel that there are any hard and fast topics of, you know, proof that this is necessary. And again, I wouldn't try to hold Jessica back at all. I know this might be something that interests her, but, um, in the end, um, any change in title has always what's followed that has always been a pay increase. It always has. And so in your future, somebody's going to come to us and say, we need a pay increase for this new position. And I can't, I don't think I can justify that to the citizens. Um, you know, this has started out to be an administrative position for you and to have somebody, um, assist with that is something completely different. I know other communities have it. I know they do it. They have things set up like that. Um, but for right now, I don't feel that this is necessary or needed, and I don't feel like there's proper documentation for it.
Okay, Dan, I think you go ahead.
Yeah, I did. Um, a couple of, couple of points here, um, in that, in that if this is approved and Jessica in that position, um, would we not have separate goals established for the administrator and the assistant administrator?
I, I would have standalone goals. Um, if, if the, um, I would look to then in turn set goals um, at, for the assistant administrator. If there's, um, I, I believe that would still be under my stead as a staff member. I answer to the village board um, as part of my role and responsibility here. No other staff member answers to the village board. Now, if, if you really want to get into the weeds of it, there are statutory supervisory, um, oversight with the village president and the chiefs, but with regards to employees, employees are under my stead. I am under the village board's stead.
Yeah, I think we have a question, too. Yeah, all right. If I, if I can just add something to this, um, even because as, as an apartment head, and I just want, I just want a second. Tom, can you hear the chief? Can you get a, why don't we just, I, I'll come, I can. I thought my voice was loud enough, maybe. It's really bad.
Yeah.
Who's that from up here? Yeah, there you go. Um, so I can speak for myself. I, I don't speak for all directors, but I'm sure that they probably share the same feelings. Um, when Jesse is gone, even though we are in charge of our own departments, there are certain approvals that we have to have. And if Jesse's gone and affects our normal everyday business, if we have an emergency come up that we need a signature on and we can't get it, um, we have to bother him on his vacation, or we have to go and we, or we have to wait. Um, so I think it's, it's not uncommon for the village administrator or a city manager to have an appointed deputy city manager, deputy village administrator, something to that effect, um, that would uh, give them the ability to have that signatory that we need as a department heads to be able to affect our business, um, efficiently and effectively when the village administrator is absent. So, um, I, I just ask for you guys to consider that, um, because it does affect us. Uh, should we have some emergency arise and we have nobody to give us a signature or approve any type of things moving forward? So I think having that designate for us is helpful.
Nice perspective.
Then conclude my comments today. Yes, thank, thank you. You know, I, I, um, in most of my professional organization experience, when you have an organization of this size, um, you really can't be without an administrator. And we need to understand that administrators need times off, time off. But we do need a, we do need a control. We, we do need a, um, a, a chain of command that's there to be able to answer the questions that we may have when things come up. This is a twenty-four hour, seven day, three hundred and sixty-five day a year job that requires the attention and requires the, uh, that's what our, that's what our, uh, our constituents want. They want those services. And sometimes things happen. Water main sprayer. We have, um, you know, water issues, sewer issues, police issues. That's, that's something that as village board we all need to know about, and I think it's really important that we have somebody here. And I think, secondly, we have an opportunity with somebody like Jessica to be able to help prime her, to be able to fit into a role that she wants to do, and also to be able to support Jesse. I hear concerns, you know, like, why don't we get this information? Why don't we get that information? And it all comes down to, well, maybe, maybe if we, maybe if we get people to work a little harder, maybe if we get them to do things a little bit differently, we'll get better results. That, to me, is the sign of insanity. I think what we need to be able to do is realize that we're growing as a village. We're going to continue to grow and we're going to need to have that administrative support. Thank you.
Any other final comment?
I think the most successful organizations and businesses have a backup plan and have people cross-trained in positions. So I feel that this is a necessary position. I think Jessica is a good fit for this. Our role as trustees is to continue to move forward policy for our residents. We should not have had to delay a meeting on Monday because somebody wasn't here to run the meeting.
Alright, let's go ahead and put it on the floor. I entertain motions for the creation of the new job description Assistant Village Administrator, we need Development Director.
I will move to approve.
I'll second. Motion in a second, final comments, questions? Very none, all in favor?
Alright.
Hi, and opposed?
Hey.
Show hands, all four. One, two, three, four, I'm against. One, two, three, a motion passes, word of three. Let's move on. Item seven, Department and Officers Report. If I just kept it up. I have to play the Jesse, sorry. Okay, that's mission.
Nope, that's, uh, okay. Um, as, as I get my notes together here, um, under my, um, under my um administrator's report this evening, I just want to take a moment to, first of all, quickly congratulate our incoming board members, Mary Pat Fenton and David Armstrong, as well as returning trustee, Mr. Miller. Congratulations and welcome aboard. With that, congratulations are also in order for incoming president Delord as well. Um staff is looking forward to working with everybody in this new board. Um I guess I'd like to take a quick second here to point out as well. Throughout my career, which is um coming up on close to twenty-plus years now, this is unprecedented for me in the amount of turnover in a governing board. Um we will have a new president with some trustee experience, thank you, but also two, three brand-new elected officials. I mean, this board i- is the dynamics of the board and staff's efforts in that education and informational outreach are are gonna be embraced, and we welcome that challenge, and we're here to help you, and we look forward to that. With that, I think I I I would be absolutely remiss if I did not take a moment to specifically recognize the significant amount of public service that has been provided to the village of Grafton by three individuals, Tom Krieger, Dave Antoine, and Jim Brunkwell. With a combined forty-six years of experience as elected officials, the village board will have big shoes to fill. Trustee Krieger, eight years as a trustee accompanied by many years as our utility superintendent. Trustee Antoine, twelve years as a trustee. Village President Brunkwell, six years as a trustee prior to serving twenty years as village president. Um that is a large amount of experience um leaving this board. Um with that, as a small token of appreciation for your service, I'd like to present each of you on behalf of myself and the management team um customized um street signs. Um we made these up. We have Krieger Court. Um on the back, we have village trustee, your terms, and each member of the uh management team signed this uh for you. Um trustee Antoine, um we're gonna get to the really long sign in a minute. Um Antoine Avenue, um again, um labeled with your terms in office and signed by each of the management team. And last but certainly not least, the the really long sign here, we we had to abbreviate Boulevard, otherwise I'd have to use two hands. Um Brunkwell Boulevard. Um again, as with the other terms as village president and your service as village trustee, signed by each of the management team. Now, um this being said, uh we will be inviting you folks back in May um as I will be bringing forward formal resolutions um for the new board um to adopt. And I believe there are other festivities planned. I will leave those shenanigans to others that are planning that, but um we will be inviting you back um in May um for another formal recommend recognition. Um so that being said, thank you very much. Um some of you folks outgoing um were on the village board that brought me to Grafton. And I want to say thank you very much for that opportunity to serve this community. My family and I have become ingrained in this community. We love this community. My job is great, and I appreciate that opportunity that you folks provided me. Um with that, on behalf of myself and the management team, thank you. Appreciate it.
Does that mean I can't play a new trustee role anymore?
No, that that deck has been dealt. I'm sorry that.
That was over a year ago, Amy.
Um with that, I I do not have any other updates as, again, frankly, I'm I'm getting back into the office here after my travel difficulties, so I wanted to make sure to have that presentation ready for this evening. Thank you.
Um moving forward, we're well represented tonight by uh department heads, staff, any questions for Jesse or the department's or feedback they wish to provide to the board?
Um Jessica, after the park meeting last night, um did you have any opportunity to talk to anybody in the entire department about possible um information about the sprinkler system, or is that something that um if I'm interested in action, people can about?
So last night. Right, yes. With the fire department, okay, yeah, because I thought that was something that was brought um forward earlier, and I thought that that would be included. I just didn't know. I know that said that they had contacted back, so I just wanted to make sure and keep price that possibly you guys can talk about that sprinkler system issue.
Absolutely, okay.
Um and then the only other thing I just wanted to say was, um I understand that our um post-session meeting has been canceled for tonight, and I'm not and I I don't understand um why, because um I think, you know, we have you here that you could possibly give us some insight into what's going on. And the other thing I wanna say is just I'm very disappointed that the board has um found out about this uh situation on Monday, and in the past, and we have not been told anything in the past four to five months about what's going on. So I'll leave it at that, and I guess um we will see what happens, but I I think that we should have a closed session, and I'm disappointed that we're not.
Okay. Any other department and officer reports? Okay, let's move on to licenses. We have two individuals, their places are in plan, are listed, and if we're more comfortable.
How many promotions we approve?
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Item nine for the bills that are going to be worth for approval of village expenditures, we have forty-six thousand seven hundred sixty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. I'll make that motion.
My second.
Motion of the second, comments, questions on bills? I saw the back and forth. The final top questions? Bearing on all in favor? That motion passes. My understanding is that uh representation vary in post-section is not available for tonight.
Correct. Legal counsel. Um so legal counsel that is um assisting the uh police department with this uh matter uh is not available this evening to discuss basically being able to lay out the entire timeline and what the situation entails uh simply is not available. I am unable to do this as I am not directly involved as it is a police and fire commission matter. Um therefore, it has been rescheduled and confirmed with the attorney for their availability um on the eighteenth.
Okay, with that being said, then we will have um closed session, and um we will move on to final actions. I would just like to say thank you to everyone that I absolutely would on this board. Um I certainly appreciate you guys all making this very uh a dynamic and um well-respected community. I think our um we've achieved our goal of becoming a full-service community. We have hospitality, we have healthcare, we have business, we have industry, we have hospitality, we have it all. We have a lot of housing options. I think if you are looking for anything, the village of Grafton can get to you, provide it to you. Um I think our relationship with the Chamber of Commerce over the years has proven very successful as far as um being a great partner with our business community. Um I think the things that we've accomplished as a board um are difficult to compare to any other community as far as what we're able to do and what we've done. I've been very proud to work with all of you. I didn't think I was gonna get emotional, but I just wanna say thanks, sir. So um with that being said, I'll retain a motion to adjourn.
I'll raise my motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Motion of the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, Tom.
Well, Jess, if you wanna do a picture of these the same way you did um.